I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in thy love, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any corrections, additions, questions on the agenda as presented? Second, I got a motion by Rick Seiler, second by Sean Ryan to approve the agenda as presented. If there's no other comments, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First thing on the agenda, we have Chris Gabbett, our city engineer, to start off with the utility project, your improvement project.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council and public. We're here for the assessment hearing for the 2019 Street Utility Improvement Project. Again, the purpose of this meeting is for the council to consider and adopt the assessment role. Just want to mention a little bit of the protocol for the assessment hearing. I have a presentation that I'll present, then we'll open it for the council for them to ask any questions. And then at that time, the mayor will open it to the public, and the public can address the council with any questions they might have. Do want to mention, a reminder, that if there is any intention to, intent to object to the assessment, that you need to file that assessment in writing with the coinciding officer or the acting city administrator before the close of this hearing. And that's to preserve your right to appeal an assessment in district court. So, I should mention too, this is the first assessment hearing we've had in five years. We went through a number of projects in the early 2000s and early teens. Last assessment hearing was in 2015. And I'll probably mention that one because it's actually very similar to this project as well. So, the purpose of this project is, again, part of the assessment process is all driven by Minnesota statutes 429, which in short is the state statute that allows local agencies, local governments, municipalities to finance and fund local improvement projects. Where basically, a portion of the benefit from that improvement is assessed back to the properties that benefit from that project. And also to protect also all the taxpayers in the community, those that aren't necessarily on the project itself. So, this is the project area that we're here for tonight. We're referred to a lot of stuff as what we call the local streets. And so, these areas down here and all these side streets. And then what we refer to as County Road 37, or former County Road 37, which is now 7th Street, east, northeast, and northwest, and then 10th Avenue northeast. That's the project area. Little background that brought us here tonight, then a lot of what was a public involvement process. It was a little over a year ago, back in August of 2018, that the council ordered the preparation of feasibility study, and again, that was to identify the scope of the project, estimate the cost, and how the project would be paid for. We did hold informational meetings, notices were sent out in September. A neighborhood meeting was held in October. And a report was brought back to the council in November last year, and then a public hearing was held on November 19. And everything has been very consistent, from the first neighborhood meeting to the public hearing, where we talked about assessment rates and methods, and everything's been consistent throughout. And then this is the rest of the project schedule that has taken place. Notices again sent out regarding the assessments, and here tonight on the 21st for the public hearing of the assessment hearing. Want to point out, we have two different types of improvements that took place under this project that are being assessed slightly differently. Different rates, and there are slightly different types of improvements. We're referring to mill and overlay, and that included all the local side streets that are here in black. And then a pavement replacement project, which was, again, Old County Road 37 was a pavement replacement project. And they're slightly different. Mill and overlay should be pretty straightforward. You mill some of the excess pavement out of the way, so you prepare to place a new layer of blacktop over the old layer of blacktop. Or pavement replacement is where the entire pavement is removed, and a new complete layer of pavement is installed. It's much thicker, the pavement replacement is a little more intensive, more costly, but will also last longer, so it's a slightly higher level of improvement. When I mentioned in 2015, we did a similar project. Through all the years, in early 2000s up to 2014, we were doing mostly old reconstruction projects. In 2015, we did the first, what we call pavement replacement, and some overlay on that project. Very similar to this project, and we're assessing it in nearly the same exact way and at the same rates. I should mention, I assume everybody got a, I forget to mention, there's agendas in the back. If anybody didn't happen to pick one up that's here for this meeting. So, here's a summary of the cost of the project, and I'm going to show you two different scenarios. Because this is the portion of the project that was what I call the bid portion of the project. So, this is an outline of summary of the costs of the portion of the project that was bid. Roadway improvements, about $3 million, storm sewer improvements, about a half a million. Water improvements, just under, about $90,000. Sanitary sewer improvements, $89,000. And most of this was just maintenance items that needed to get taken care of. Sanitary sewer improvements, this was not really associated with the paving project, but it was to prepare us for our project next year on Main Street. Now, it was to reconstruct a portion of sanitary sewer on 3rd Avenue, which is over here on the west side of Flipside, over by the railroad tracks. Total amount, just over $3.9 million, just under $4 million. And like I said, this is the bid portion of the project. While that was the bid portion of the project, there was additional things that are taking place with this project that are planned, that are being funded, and that included things like lighting, railroad crossings that are proposed to be replaced or repaired, probably in 2022. Again, the county has to set aside money for that. And then planning and budgeting for seal coating on these new streets, starting next year. Which runs that up to a total amount of just under, just over $4.3 million. It doesn't affect any of the assessments, but this is additional items that are included with the project. Again, lighting, railroad crossing, seal coating, that's again planned and budgeted with this project. So, how do you fund local improvement infrastructure project? As you recall, I said Minnesota statutes 429 is really local agency, city's best tool for financing local improvements where there's benefit to adjacent property owners. So, how do you fund them? Again, you can fund projects through general levy, which is your citywide property taxes. And I point out, there's what we call the 20% rule. You have to assess at least 20% of the benefit if you're going to bond and borrow money, and cover a lot of those costs through general levy. You can pay through fees. Sewer utility fund, water utility fund, stormwater utility fund. Assessments to the benefiting properties. Outside funding, which is often, or rarely the case for cities, but in this case, Scott County is covering a large share of the cost of this project. Again, the city does have obligations and a share of cost on Old County Road 37, but Scott County covers the large share of that. And then, as I note here, some fair and reasonable liability balance of all of the above. So, this is how the funding lays out for the bid portion of the project. Sanitary sewer utility fund, a little over $286,000, 7.2% of the cost of the project. Water utility fund, $90,000. Stormwater utility fund, $326,000. Again, these are the city's utility funds. Assessments, the $1.263 million. General debt service, this is basically the city, general levy taxes, property taxes, shared from the whole community. And then Scott County, $1.7 million. For a total of just under $4 million. Again, that was the bid portion of the project. Sometimes I like to break it down and kind of just show it again. Citywide contribution, this is the city as a whole, $991,000, or 25% of the cost of the project. Scott County, $1.7 million, or 43% of the cost of the project. And the neighborhood contribution, those that are being assessed for the project at $1.22 million, or 32% of the cost of the project. Brings us to that $4 million. We look at, again, with the overall stuff, all that does is, what I mean, including the lights, the railroad crossing, the seal coating, it bumps up the amount of contribution from the general debt service. So, the city's assessment policy, city's assessment policy has been the same since early 2000s. How we work on new projects. And it depends on the type of improvement. If we do talk about a full reconstruction project, we're talking at higher assessment amounts because there's a greater benefit and greater cost. We talk about pavement replacements, that's less. We talk about mill and overlay, that's even less yet. So, the city's assessment policy was set up to be consistent, uniform, fair, and equitable treatment. What I mean that is, from property to property, street to street, project to project, year to year. The intent of this assessment policy is to treat all single-family residential's the same, that everybody's part of a street program. And that the assessments are based on a residential unit. Some cities, and maybe even New Prague in the past, but since early 2000s, have assessed on a unit basis. Single-family residential property is one unit. Doesn't matter if it's 65 feet wide, 75 feet wide, 85, they're treated as one unit. Then there's also a separate rate and means to assess multifamily institutional commercial properties. They are assessed at 30% rates higher because they typically generate more traffic, more demand on the infrastructure, et cetera. But again, they're treated a comparable unit to the residential rates. And I'll get into that on a little diagram of map here. The idea is also that the assessment policy is fixed rate. For those that were at the first neighborhood meeting and the public hearing, the assessment rates that we have, that are proposed here are the same as was presented a year ago. So, we can go into a project in the beginning, tell the folks what the amount is that will be assessed, so that they can plan it here ahead of time, and the rate is known ahead of time. And the idea here is that it will be consistent, year to year, project to project. The only adjustment is an inflationary increase. So, when I say we did a project in 2015, the rates that were used in 2015 were equated to current value today, and that's basically the rates that are presented in this assessment role. In that way, depending, projects can come in high or low, they can fluctuate in cost, and by having a fixed rate, that burden of the fluctuation doesn't land on the property where it's being assessed. It's being picked up by that general levy, it's picked up by the whole city. As a project may be coming in a little less or a little high. Every project's different and has different efficiencies. So, again, we can treat residents, neighborhood to neighborhood, project to project, year to year, the same. So, when I talk about unit basis, this is kind of a diagram that illustrates like two streets that are being improved. Single-family residential property, one unit, one unit, one unit, one unit. If you're on a corner, and one side is not being done, but the other is, we assess a half a unit on this project, and someday in the future, it'll be a half a unit on the other. And again, that's just a level out, we'll call it assessment revenue. If you're on a corner where both sides are done, you get a half a unit here and a half a unit here. One unit, just like your neighbor in the middle, that's one unit. When it comes to larger, commercial, institutional, multifamily residential properties, they're looked at as a comparable residential unit. In this example, so what we've done is we've identified a unit as typically 75 feet. So, we look at a parcel, look at their full frontage, divide by 75, and evaluate how many units does that appear to be. In this case, again, this larger commercial or institutional multifamily property is three units, and would be assessed three units accordingly, again, at the multifamily rate, which is again 30% higher than the residential. So, basically, they're treated the same, with just, again, a slightly higher factor. So, these are the rates that are proposed in the assessment role. These are the same rates that were presented in the feasibility study at the public hearing last year, and almost identical to our estimate of the rates when we held a neighborhood meeting. I think it was a dollar, dollar or two, from what we had estimated. So, the reclamation or pavement replacement, same terminology. That's again, former County Road 37. The residential rates were $4,600 per unit. The non-residential, so all others, were $5,980 per unit. The mill and overlay, which is all the local streets, the residential unit was $2,114 per unit. And the all others, $2,748 per unit. So, the assessment process, again, it's outlined in everybody's notice of public, or notice of assessment hearing. It's outlined in the state statute, but basically, where we're at tonight, the city council is here to consider the assessments, the assessment role. Assuming the council adopts this assessment role, the assessments can be payable, interest-free, within the next 30 days. That deadline will basically be November 20th, 2019. That should be a final notice sent to everybody as a reminder. The unpaid assessments will be levied to the respective Scott or LeSueur counties, and be payable with property taxes over 15 years, with the first payment due in 2020. The interest rate, the city has a great bond rate, and that's reflected in the rates that are of the assessments at 3.7%. And there is an option for, the city has passed a resolution in the past that allows for deferment of assessments on homesteaded properties. To, and that's, there's a number of criteria. It's senior citizens over 65, persons retired by disability, those in Army National Guard or reserves that are on leave where paying the assessment would provide a hardship. It doesn't forgive the assessment, it doesn't forgive the interest on the assessment, it just defers the need to have to make payments on the assessment until some future date or a property sells. Again, if anybody has an interest in that, it's outlined in the notice of assessment hearing. They're asked, does any applications for that be applied in the next, within the next 14 days, the next two weeks. So, with that, I'm done. I guess, city mayor and council, if you've got any questions, happy to answer.
Okay, anyone on the council have any questions before I open up the public hearing?
Yes. First of all, Chris, can you email, well, at least me, I'm assuming maybe everybody else wants his presentation. Can you send that to us?
Sure.
That'd be great, just because I've had several people ask different questions. I can reference this when I talk to them. And then, second, there seems to be an underline with some of the neighbors that there was, this project was, there was cost overrun because of the length of time, and it wasn't, continually missed dates throughout the summer. I know it was an extremely wet summer, and that had something to do with it. But also, they noticed that, you know, there was blacktop put down, new blacktop put down, and then re-tore up, and then, so where did, just to answer those questions for them, where was your initial projection compared to the bid? You gave us an initial projection of what you thought this project would cost. I'm just curious where it came in at.
Well, I guess I don't remember exactly, but everything throughout, since feasibility study to bids, to where we're at today, is all in the ballpark. We are still in the process of dealing with some claims from the contractor. Some are maybe justified, others are not. Some of it has to do with corrective work that needed to take place. If it was within their control, or if it was Mother Nature, those are things that we're considering. Nothing here that's affecting, again, assessments. Some of the work that had to be done was corrective work the contractor had to do. And some of it was affected by weather. You know, we had to make sure that the work and the project was done right. So, those that probably saw work on 37, got paved, and spots were dug out and redone, that was corrective work that had to be done because of wet conditions in some cases. In other cases, it was stuff that contractor just needed to correct. So, some of that is not going to cost the city money. Others will be stuff that we're reviewing and will be considering with staff. If it's a justified action, those will be things that we bring them back.
Okay, but that wouldn't have affected the residents' assessment? They should have been assessed the same?
No, the only thing it affected was the headaches of it taking a little longer than I think any of us expected. And it was a combination of weather and a combination of, the general contractor being able to control, schedule some of the subcontractors. They created a few hiccups along the way, you know. Subcontractors delayed, and then rain occurred, and then it just was a domino effect in a few cases. So, we were definitely very cooperative in the end. Obviously, we got the road to open before schools started, but it wasn't necessarily the way we had hoped and planned.
And then, I was curious to see that Scott County only paid 43.2% of that? I was always under the assumption that they were, it was a 50-50 deal. And as you know, I voted against it because I thought the county should have paid the entire County Road 37. Because we were giving them a favor taking that back.
Yeah, 43% of this entire project.
Oh, I see.
Shit, County Road 37, it was in excess of 2/3 of the project that the county's covered, plus railroad crossings and some other stuff. So, everything that we were obligated was based on the turnback policy, which actually was more generous than if they just came in, if they kept control of the road that weren't going to turn it back, the city would have had to cover even more cost. But they covered more things as part of the turnback agreement, and we took it to a higher level. So, yes, they covered a definite good share of the cost of County Road 37. That's all I have.
And Chris, I guess for the public's notice, that the two roundabouts that were put in on 7th and 12th, those were completely paid by the city?
Correct. Had we done them or not, the project wouldn't, the assessments and everything wouldn't have been any different. Again, they were based on a benefit and a fixed rate.
Any other questions?
I might have one for Scott. So, one of the questions that I got, I believe the other council members were emailed as well. The fact that they have 30 days to pay this interest-free, is that always standard? And is there a way around that we could delay that interest-free and give them more time to pay that?
How we're handling that is pursuant to chapter 429 that Chris discussed before. So, it is a state statute requirement, we give notice, they have 30 days to pay, and that's when it goes to the county. So, we're following what statute requires, what the legislature has set up.
Any other questions? Okay, I guess I'll open the floor to the public hearing. If you want to make any comments, I would appreciate if you go to the podium, state your name and address, and voice your concern. Thank you.
Excuse me, my name's Paul Simon, I live on 708 Lexington Avenue. I actually have three questions. Can I pay with a credit card?
Scotty, is that?
Okay. If I come in here tomorrow, pay with the credit card, can I get a credit card?
I will have to get back to you on what our limit for the dollar amount is for that. Because we do have typical limits on credit cards, and I don't know what the general.
Second, while you kept talking about the railroad tracks down by Flipside, why am I paying for part of that?
No, it's not the railroad tracks.
You said to say something about Flipside. Well, yeah.
Included with this project was a portion of sanitary sewer replacement that was part of the bid project. It had nothing to do with any of the cost that was looked at for this assessments, and that was down by Flipside. On County Road 37, down by Char Industries, that railroad crossing is part of our turnback agreement, needs to be replaced. It won't be replaced now until 2022, but the county is on board to cover the greatest share of that cost. The city does have a little bit of an obligation, so those were not referring to.
Okay, then I have just one more question. I also have a piece of property on Red Wing Avenue. And so, 37 was over. So, they just redid a mill and overlay on Red Wing Avenue, and I didn't get assessed. But now I'm getting assessed for this, I don't quite understand why we have $23 on our assessment.
Go ahead, Chris.
So, number one, Red Wing is not in City of New Prague. City of New Prague has, had a financial obligation to share on a portion of the cost of County Road 37. And the city's policy is to treat everybody in the community the same. Doesn't matter if you're on a county road, local road, everybody's treated the same, the benefit is assessed the same. Again, because the city had a financial obligation to pay for a share of cost, assessments were used to help pay for that share of that.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
My name is Darcy Mock, and I live on Columbus Avenue. So, and I'm just wondering the rationale with the notice here of not to be able to partially prepay the assessment. It says that the assessment has, is not authorized by this ordinance. Other than, obviously, it's, I'm aware of the fact that you can prepay, but then you're paying the 3.7 interest to the end of the year. So, I'm just wondering what the rationale is there, why you can't prepay?
Just the city policy that the council has not allowed prepayments.
Partial.
Partial payments.
Partial.
Sorry, partial payments. As a council decision, I don't know, Scott, if you have more detail on.
Yeah, I mean, it is an ordinance the council could choose to adopt. In the past, the council has looked at it and not adopted that as part of its assessment procedure. So, that is possible for the council to do, if required an ordinance to be done. So, that would take some time, obviously, and there are charges to do. In discussions the council and other cities that I represent have, it's not an easy provision to allow partial payments because it divides up the assessment where it goes to the county, and leads to some mistakes in that kind of a double accounting system. So, there are a number of cities that do not do that for that reason. The legislature has said that the council will have to decide on a policy basis to do that. So far, it's not happened in New Prague, and a number of the other cities I represent, they have also not done it as well.
Okay, it just seems counterintuitive to me, that why would they not want their money?
Yeah, no, I understand.
I mean, I understand about the interest and whatever else, so, okay, I guess I understand that. Then the other question that I have, Chris, might be for you, but it maybe wasn't addressed, is where does the issue of when the gas meters were all replaced with this project that came down? I have no problem with Center Point Energy replacing my gas meter and whatever, but I don't know who to address the problems that ensued after that with the tear up of my yard and the resulting issues there, that I know I'm going to have to address with a landscaping company this, come this spring.
Well, I will mention that the gas, while the gas did their work, kind of driven, be caught by our project, it wasn't part of our project. They are permitted with the city. If we're aware of issues, we brought it to their attention. If they left you with contact information, those would be the folks that shouldn't be.
Well, no, the only notice was from, that I as a homeowner got, was, to my knowledge, was this. And I mean, one portion of this where it says, remove any loose staples secured in the blanket. Well, I brought about 38 of them with me tonight, and I mean, this is what my lawnmower went over. And then I went out and removed them, because my interpretation of a staple would be more of a squared, secured, kind of flush object anyway. So, I just would like to express my disappointment with the company that did the repair work. And in my situation, they had to come back and redo it because of the weather, which they did. But, yes, very disappointing.
We were very frustrated as well because we were getting a lot of those calls and we were trying to get that, you know, again, outside of our purview or our ability and trying to get them to get in and get their work done. We'll make note of it. So your issue still hasn't been addressed as far as your concerns? And I'm sure...
Well, I haven't brought it to anyone because I, I mean, to my knowledge, this was the only notice that I got. I don't think that there was, if you have questions, and I think I did talk, I don't think I talked to you, Chris, of the project.
Probably, might have been Lee or Field Guide.
Lee, it was Lee.
Yeah, he got a lot of those calls even though it wasn't under our contract.
Yeah, I figured.
We could certainly make a call to Center Point on their, on your behalf and let them know. What's your exact address?
Seven zero one Columbus.
Seven one.
And it's mainly the south portion of my lawn, and it was quite an expansive piece of land that they had to cut up, you know.
Okay.
I agree with her on that. They did a really poor job and those staples are, it's like, what, whose bright idea was it to use, come up with this design? You know, it's like, do you realize what a lawnmower is going to do or if one of them come up partially and it could...
Does Center Point have a punch list they gotta do that you can add that to?
Not part of the city project, but we can, on their behalf, give them a call again and have them take a look. I know, Paul, you had actually called us before about that, I believe, already.
Yeah, I did. It was, it was, and there were tire tracks and it was, it was real quality work.
Okay, any other comments?
Craig Similar, eight oh seven Columbus Avenue South. I guess I'd just like a very brief opinion from each of the council members and the mayor. We all saw this, how this project progressed through the summer, I'd just like a brief opinion of what you guys thought of it. Quick comment before I give you mine.
Well, you know, I certainly feel the pain of everyone having to live through the delays. I, you travel County Road Thirty-Seven as a main route, and so I was able to see what was going on, and I also had citizens of the city come up to me with questions of debris on lawn, storage of items on lawns, that sort of thing. So I think the care to private property could have been a lot better.
Thank you. I think maybe you hit it right on the head. That was the one complaint that I had, it seemed a little more sloppy than some of the previous projects, and I agree that it was, it could have been handled a little bit better.
Thank you.
Even with the excess rain and whatever else that delayed it, but...
Thank you, Sean.
I guess I can reiterate that. I did have a lot of complaints on the timeframe it was taking. I understand it was, the rain had a lot to do with it, but in my mind, I think it probably could have been done a little bit more efficiently, and I'm praying that the 2020 project doesn't run into the same type of weather or else it could get really nasty.
Thank you, Mayor.
I was overall satisfied with the project, disappointed in the timing, of course, but as you and I both know, living here, we've run into projects like this and that happens and unnatural events like rain. And it's certainly worked smoother than other road projects that I'm familiar with in the past, so there certainly is some difficulties. I appreciated the communication, and there was a lot of effort made in communicating a year ago and keeping people informed all the way through. I'm very happy with that. There were certainly issues and complaints that were valid, but overall, I think it was managed pretty well.
Okay, thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, I'm the same way. Everybody knows I was in construction for thirty years, but, you know, I noticed that they were getting out of hand with their mess, you know, not being careful with people's lawns. And after we said something, they kind of straightened it up. The rain delays, of course, I mean, nobody can do anything about that, but there was a lot of dust. I got complaints about the dust and the timing, but overall, I mean, it's beautiful now, I mean, but I hate seeing stuff like that where punchless stuff is left unknown. So property damage needs to be addressed. Anything that they did, get the added to their punch list. There's got to be a punch list for the general.
Thanks, Rick. My opinion is, after having seen a number of road projects, this one just seemed to take forever. I think everyone got frustrated with the delays and the mess around town. I live on Columbus Avenue South, as I said. When they did the overlay on Columbus Avenue South, they did the whole Columbus Avenue South project on one lane, and we didn't see anybody for how long? Couple of weeks? Maybe I'm exaggerating, but it was a couple of weeks. All their equipment was parked there, sunny, beautiful days, nobody was working on it, but half the road was paved. And I think that was just an indicator of how the rest of the project was handled. And I think giving a contractor leeway because of the weather, weather occurs every year, they've got a plan for it, but there were many beautiful days out there where there wasn't a person on the job, or maybe one person with the shovel was doing something, and many days that they were not working on. And if they had trouble with their subcontractors, I would just urge you that next time the street project is bid, that it's taken into consideration how this contractor handled it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, and agreed.
I'd like to agree with them. It was terrible. There were plenty of nice days out there. They're done by four or five o'clock. I delivered diesel fuel to construction companies. They were going until eight, nine o'clock. They were working weekends, Saturdays and Sundays. These guys didn't. They didn't. And there was a lot of times, I'd be coming home from work at five, six o'clock, there was nobody to be seen. It's like, come on, guys, get this job done. And they didn't, and I totally agree with them. And there, and I forgot to tell you, there was a bunch of, when they milled it up, there was a bunch of tar in my grass, you know, so I had to go out there with a rake and get some of that out. They did a really poor job, and I totally agree with them. They did a poor, poor job.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Dave Project two oh four Sixth Street Circle Southeast. I'm more interested in finding out what the latest rumor is on Sixth Street Circle Southeast at that hole that the birds love in the summer and might want to turn into a skating rink in the winter. Are you guys going to have somebody level that off or what's going to go?
It's on the punch list.
Still can't. Otherwise mildly complained with the project. It's not the project itself. It was the crews, the crew that was hired to do the cleaning for a gas company. They did a crappy job, I think. Took a lot of, where they took up our lawn, they took out a lot of black dirt. I don't have much black dirt on my lawn, but, and then dumped in sand as an filler. And they said, well, we put four inches of dirt back. Well, it'd take four feet of dirt out in some places and put four inches back. It's not equivalent. It's happened on some areas. I was okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, is it necessary for me to go there?
Yes, please. No, you can be on TV.
I have a question. My name is Nigel R. I'm six oh one Garry Lane. My question is with reference to the percentages paid. Can you bring that screen back up again? I was under the impression that the assessments were going to total approximately twenty percent of the job. Was that correct? I thought that when we had the initial meeting, that's what you said, that the minimum amount was twenty percent, that you suggested that that would be approximately what would be assessed.
Yeah, well, okay, okay, there's two things going on. If you were at the initial meeting, I said the assessment rates were established to target between about twenty-five to thirty-five percent is kind of the target to cover a project. What I mentioned by the twenty percent rule is if, cities can't just go out and borrow money to do improvements where it benefits properties without assessing at least twenty percent of the cost of the project. That's the twenty percent rule, what I referred to.
Right.
So that's like a minimum.
I guess that was the understanding that I had, seventy-two. I'm not going to complain about what you're going to assess. I mean, I think that we have a much better cul-de-sac today than we did last year. Some things happened that probably took a little bit longer, wasn't something I would do or want, but today it's a better cul-de-sac, and I like that, and I'm willing to pay it, I don't have a problem with that. But I'm curious, because it seemed to me that, and I could be wrong, because I just came in here at the backside of this, that the assessments are totaling more than what the city is putting in? Is that correct? Did I get it right? Thirty-two percent by the city, or thirty-two percent by the assessments and twenty-five percent by the city?
Yes.
You had a chart that kind of broke it down.
So about twenty-five percent is city contribution, that's from all the utility funds. It's basically, it's because Scott County is covering a large share. If we look at the, at the city and the county together, I mean, the city and the county together covering seventy-eight percent or whatever, sixty-eight percent of the cost of the project.
I understand that, but we knew that going in. I guess, I guess my statement that I wanted to make is I was under the impression, and I could be wrong, and I could be the only one here in town who thought this, that we were looking at a twenty percent assessment. So I was kind of surprised to see that we're paying thirty-two percent of the total assessment versus, which is a higher amount than what the city is actually paying for. That's just a comment I wanted to make. The other one I want to make is if you have a lot of credit card payment, will you give me a two and a half percent discount if I pay cash?
I do not believe that, no.
Why not?
I can answer that right away, no.
What credit card fee you have to pay when you accept credit cards?
That's what I need to look into and see what our limit is.
Otherwise you're giving...
Probably fairly low.
Otherwise you're giving everybody else additional, and you're not giving me that same discount.
Yep, I don't even know if we'll take any amount in credit card. I need to verify with our finance department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do have one for Ken. Hey, Ken, would you be able to find out about that credit card?
When will I do it? Oh, our finance director will be back, I believe, Wednesday. Wednesday. I can let everybody know.
Okay.
I have one more question for Chris. So you said at the beginning of your presentation that if they're going, if the homeowner wanted to contest this, it has to be done before, it has to be done essentially tonight?
Before you close the hearing.
Before we close the hearing. Was that communicated to the people in that, in that order?
Yeah, I'll jump in on that. Yeah, it goes on in every notice we have. It's mentioned, that's why Chris has mentioned at the meeting, and that's the next step you have right before you now, that I'm going to say the same thing again, that if anybody has an objection, they have to make it now in writing, because you're going to close the public hearing short, and you do have three objections you need to deal with. Staff has looked at those and will provide input on that to you, but that's the next step you have. And it is true, to preserve your right to appeal the assessment to district court once the council is forward with adopting the assessment, all needs to be submitted, an objection needs to be submitted now, so you can preserve that right. And it has to be in writing, signed.
Okay, but that was communicated to everybody?
It was, absolutely. It goes out in the notices that go out.
That's all I wanted to know, you said, so they were coincided.
Yep, great. Okay, yeah, great.
One other thing that I heard Ken say earlier, or maybe it was Chris, explain something about the advantages of being sixty-five and older on this project. You have what, two weeks to...
Okay, so referring to the ability to do a deferred assessment.
Yes.
Deferred assessment is essentially somebody that, financial reasons, there would be difficulty to make a payment. If you're sixty-five years or older, you can apply for senior citizen deferment, but it doesn't make the assessment go away.
Yeah.
Doesn't make the interest go away. It just makes the need to make payment go away until some point where the project, property would sell or something changes.
But that has to be done within what period?
It's, it's, it's within two weeks. Two weeks apply with the...
Is that with the county that that's done?
No, that's applied through, through the city administrator's office.
Do you want to get a hold of myself or my Johnson needs back? We have an application.
One of the advantages of being sixty-five.
But there was other provisions of that.
Hardship, um...
Permanent eligibility, national...
It's on page two, on the backside of the notice of a public hearing.
Thank you.
Information on that.
And then there's income limit requirements.
Okay. Any other questions? From the public, go ahead.
Chris Kozatchek, six oh six Columbus Avenue South. I just want to touch, based on what Darcy said before. So if we don't have the money for this, I have two lots there, so I'm going to be paying twice. And so if we don't have the money for this, I'm going to be paying three point seven one percent interest for fifteen years. I can't prepay, because if I go to the bank, I'm getting what, one or two, two percent there or something?
Well, you won't find me there, Chris.
I'm just saying, you know.
You could prepay fully, but not partially pay.
Yes.
So you could pay the full amount like, I think, like you had said.
I know, I could pay the full amount right now, or what?
You could pay the full amount two years from now, four years from now, whatever during that time, you just can't partially pay a portion of it.
And you're saving interest on that kind of thing.
Okay, so I can pay...
Yes.
So like in like two years or something?
If you have the money at that point, you could pay it all off.
Okay.
That's what I was wondering.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And to further clarify that, again, it's in the notice of assessment hearing, that again, you'd make those payments after this at respective county, Scott or Swir County. And they should be made before November fifteenth, because if you don't make it, if you make it after November fifteenth, you pay a whole another year's interest. So just do it before November fifteenth.
Fifteenth or twentieth?
Pardon?
Fifteenth or the twentieth?
Again, sorry, sorry to make any confusion. Again, the, any prepayment for the assessment now, interest free, the due date is November twentieth. If you wait until next year and you go to the county to make payment, you have to do it before November fifteenth of next year or whatever consecutive, future years.
Okay, any other comments from the public? Okay, I get...
Do the objections, nobody else has any.
Okay, so now we have to address the, before we close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have...
First objection from New Day Church. I spelt it in writing, dated October eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. They're disputing the assessment on their two PID numbers that they have on the property. They don't have a specific objection, they're just saying they're disputing the proposed assessment, and they look forward to working with the city on the matter. So that was New Day Church, that was the first objection they have in front of you today.
Typically, what you would do with that, if there's any further testimony from any individual representing the church, you can certainly hear that, but the question for you generally to ask is particularly to staff and most likely to Chris, does the objection change what you would do relative to the assessment if you were moved forward? And Chris can answer that and tell you that. What this does, having the objection filed, it preserves the right of the church to go forward and further challenge the assessment, should they desire to do so. That has to happen within thirty days of your adoption of the assessment.
Okay. Is anyone representing New Day Church here? Anyone have any questions from the council? I did mention when I talked to Scott and Ken beforehand, I just wanted to make sure that we're consistent, and in other projects that we have done, religious organizations have been assessed for street improvements, even though they do not pay property taxes, correct?
Yeah, correct.
So that's just a statement I want to make, as a governor, of that.
And then Mayor, I guess for the record, the only question would be, is to Chris, would it change, I mean, with the objection, would you change the assessment you're recommending to the city council on this matter?
No, I would not. It's consistent with past projects, consistent project, or property to property.
Anyone have any questions? No. Scott, do we need to vote on it?
No, that's fine, if you don't have anything further on that, and you're not going to change the assessment rule, that will be handled later, at the time of the resolution.
Okay. The next one, Ken, if you can...
Next one would be Community Baptist Church at five hundred Canal Thirty-Seven, received a letter, basically undated, but it was received today, ten twenty-one nineteen, basically asking for the city administrator to read into the record, this letter being a formal objection to the property value for the proposed assessment for Community Baptist Church. They believe the appraised value of the property, based upon the benefit received, is above fair market value, and ask that the council review the assessment. And that's from Community Baptist Church, Pastor John.
I would interpret that what they're saying there is that they object to the proposed assessment, I would give them, lean that way, even though they're not saying that, is property value really is not an issue in this current situation, but to preserve their rights, I would read it to mean that they're objecting to the assessment. Correct.
Okay. Any other comments? Chris, I guess in your opinion, would...
Same as the other, no, I would not make a change.
Okay, thank you. And then, I guess, is there anyone from Community Baptist Church here who wants to speak on the Baptist Church? Okay, and then the final one?
Final one would be from Steven and Jen Moore at four oh two Seventh Street Northeast. This letter is written, objection to the hearing notice they received on the assessment. They noted that they do not specifically dispute the work that was done, but they do disagree with the short notice that they're given to pay the assessment before it would incur interest. They believe that that should be an option for longer term for the property owners, without occurring fees or interest, and believe that other property owners feel the same. They noted that they had not seen the proposed assessment rule on file, were wondering if the project was in budget. They had multiple phone calls with the property manager, project managers during the project, talked to neighbors that had concerns about inaccurate dates of completion, specific portions of the project not being done on time, frustration by residents, noting weather, but then they believe that there were other mistakes made, or several things, as we mentioned earlier, were redone by the contractor, some due to weather, some due to other circumstances So basically, they finished their letter by noting that they do not believe that their ask is unreasonable, they note that the forty-six hundred dollar assessments should be able to be accepted interest-free over the next two years, and they believe that having to collect the full amount within no interest within thirty days is a crippling effect.
Okay. Anyone from the public want to comment on that? Question? Yes?
That was our letter, and I just wanted to say that many of the things were already identified. Sean, you've mentioned a couple of different things, and thank you very much for doing that, but it is a lot of money, I mean, forty-six hundred dollars is a lot of money, so I was going to talk with you a little bit, or after the meeting as well, so...
Okay. Paul?
Hey, I do have one more question. Is that going to be the detour for Main Street next year?
It is one of them.
Is there like a, you know, you buy a car, you get a warranty, is there any kind of a warranty on it? Because you're going to be having a lot of, is that road capable of semis, cement trucks and all that, is it built for that? And is there like a guarantee? I know the warranty, I don't think they warranty roads, but...
They warranty roads, there's a two-year warranty, the two-year warranty hasn't even started yet, and it is a ten-ton road, and it will be part of the west-bound by, or detour bypass for Main Street.
Is approximately four hundred and seventy thousand dollars okay as far as being close to what the bid was? Because if I recall, the estimate for this was three million and five hundred thousand?
This is the bid portion of the project, this is four million dollars, that includes construction costs, as well as all the other costs, engineering, administrative, legal, fiscal.
Right, I understand that, in two thousand and nineteen, you told us it was going to be three and a half million dollars. So I'm wondering if four hundred, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred is an acceptable overrun for a project like this?
Well, that was probably, that was probably the preliminary estimate at that time, and there were some things that were added to the project when it got bid, so everything has been in line with the bids, et cetera, at this point. So it was what was brought to council and awarded at that time.
Okay. Chris, I guess some of this last objection?
That really, I guess that letter is more on payment process, which again is governed by state statute.
Okay.
So again, the assessments would be levied to the counties payable over fifteen years, that's kind of a relief for, to spread it out for folks.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I guess second one Maggie Bass. There's no other comments? All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Next on the agenda is a resolution on adopting the assessment rule. Anyone have any questions or comments they want to make? I thirst to do it. If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the assessment rules.
I think our party suggests that in that motion, also meld between perhaps the three objections received by the city as a proposal.
Okay, I guess I'll make a motion to the resolution to pass the assessment rules, along with the three objections that have been addressed. Second? You guys second by Rick Styler. No other comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Chris, I just have a couple of questions that are more housekeeping, but in your opinion, was the contractor responsive to the issues and complaints that have been brought up tonight? A lot of these things I wasn't aware of, but like the example of leaving material on certain areas and things.
I would say generally, yes, and some of the leaving materials was, I know of the gas company as well, but I know our contractor had issues leaving some things in some certain places.
I think your answer was real close, generally, yes. Was it perfect?
No.
Okay.
We tried really hard for a lot of things in a row and months to get their subs to do a better job at a lot of different parts of the project. Sometimes we were successful, not always. I don't know how to fix that.
And then just for clarification on the gas company issue, that had nothing to do with this project, they just happened to piggyback this project to take advantage of the situation. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, typically, we will contact all the utility companies before we start projects. There was really nothing related to the gas that affected us, meaning that they didn't, we didn't care if they did any work or not. They chose to do the work, I guess they felt that was the time to do it, I'm not sure why in some of those areas. So again, that's a right they have as an applicant and a utility in the city.
But we have no leverage over them during that process, besides the normal we would in any other situation.
You know, again, they're permitted, you know, we were, we would deal with them, and generally, our contact with CenterPoint was fairly responsive, it's their company that was doing restoration that was very unresponsive.
Well, I'm just disappointed, obviously, that I think everyone is, that whatever they did reflected poorly in the whole project.
Correct.
So unfortunate.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Ken, number twenty, vacation of certain easements?
I'm going to take a look at the overhead here, so number one, yes, QuickTrip has made application for a platting and conditions permit, or a second story, Greg. Location they're looking at is northeast quadrant of Highway Nineteen and Chuliski Avenue, it's a policy of a half acre school property that they have a purchase agreement on. The two lots within Highview Tenth Edition that I've highlighted in blue on the map are, properties that were previously platted, and conditions, basically, the perimeter of each lot, there's drainage utility easements around the perimeter. In the process of their plat, they submitted, they need to vacate the easements that are on, basically, all portions of the lines in blue at ten feet wide, because plating process for plating of the bigger lot does not vacate the easements, they need to go through this process to do the vacation. But this might be, if there's any utility lines in those areas, city or otherwise, but we do require a public hearing to be called before we adopt any ordinance to vacate easements. In front of you tonight is a resolution to call for that public hearing to occur on November eighteenth, so between now and then, we're going to put a notification in the paper on two different occasions, mail, notice to utility companies within the city, and alert them to that public hearing as well, and along with that, also have an ordinance as the ultimate document that would vacate the easements or introduction here. And that would, again, I'll put up the actual easements here on the plats. Two lots here.
Now, Scott, is it fine to have a first reading of the ordinance before we get any recommendation from the planning commission?
This, easements don't ever go to the planning commission for our process of the city charter.
Any answer, so yes, it's okay.
Well, we're reviewing the plat and the conditions permit likely at the November planning commission meeting, and we want to get this process going, because actually the plat be reviewed the same week that they hold it here, to make sure there's some assurance there that the process was at least started before we get too far along.
Okay.
Actually, if we're not at the process of downing the ordinance yet, who is the current owner of the property?
Wrong bank is current owner of the property.
And are they petitioning for this vacation?
They were co-signing on the application. Actually, they are the applicant, and QuickTrip has submitted supporting documentation.
He's the owner of the first QuickTrip applying for it.
What's that?
It says QuickTrip applying.
On their letter, they noted that, yes, but it is actually wrong bank, and this would not be approved, I should note, will not be approved until plat and everything else has gotten approval, it's all contingent upon...
So the ordinance is state is contingent?
Correct, it's contingent upon, the plat would not be approved until this happens. We don't want to vacate these easements.
Go back again and do it.
Correct, yep.
Okay, well, that was my question is...
It's contingent upon the plat being approved, it puts a new ones in place.
Process there, so we just can't get anyone applying to vacate if they don't have...
Nope. No, wrong bank actually signed the application.
Standing in the...
Okay.
Hey, wrong bank actually had to sign the application for the plat, the vacation, and the conditions permit.
Okay. Any other questions? I guess I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for November eighteenth on this vacation of easements.
Oh, second?
I guess second by Maggie Bass. There's no other comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, so the reading is set for November eighteen. And now, we're looking at the first reading...
Yep.
...of the ordinance, stating these vacations. Anyone have any questions regarding those, regarding that?
I should note, with any ordinance as well, we do have to post that in the hallway of City Hall, ten days prior to the adoption, and we also will make sure we do that as well.
Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, anyone make a motion to introduce the first reading?
I'll make it.
Go vote. We got a motion by Rick Styler, I will second it on the first reading of the ordinance, vacating certain easements. So if there's no other comments, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Good, thank you. Number three, are you taking that too, Ken?
I am. As the council, I don't think anybody's actually in the council at the time back in two thousand and nine, if I'm correct, two percent of that account? The council at the time, in two thousand and nine, ten years ago, engaged in a flexible spending account, FSA, and a VIVA plan, which is a voluntary employment benefit association plan on this city. We haven't any change to that arrangement, basically, the VIVA has a city contribution, which is currently five hundred per single and a thousand for family, that has been that set home since two thousand and fourteen, and then the employees are able to basically flex up to the statutory limit, which is their federal limit, which is twenty-seven dollars, twenty-seven hundred dollars for twenty twenty. Everybody's familiar with flex plans, and we have Vicky Walsh here from CDOs to add certain more specific questions as well, if anyone wants to point that out. But flex money, if you don't use it within a lot of time, you can lose that. Better Department had meetings over the past few months, we've had discussions with Vicky, and trying to look at the alternative to the VIVA and the Flex Savings Account Plan, and I've been looking at an HSA, which is a health savings account. A lot of the talk we had was the flexibility of the HSA, employees save more money in pre-tax, if they would want to put more money away into the HSA. The one thing it did require was that we have to have a qualified high deductible health plan, which we are able to accommodate within our current limits that we have on our deductible, or maximum on our deductible to pay. Under our current plan does mean with the requirements of what we currently have, so we're not looking at any increased deductible for the employees. Should we have the council agree to the change in the plan and move to the HSA version? There is an additional one point seven percent savings to the city on the health insurance premium. If you believe, we talked about this at our budget meeting last Monday, where it was talked about being eleven percent, this would reduce that down to nine point three percent from what was initially anticipated, so a little bit more of a savings in the twenty twenty budget process.
Okay, Vicky, can you explain that? Why, just changing from an FSA to an HSA, would lower the...
It's changing it from, do you want me to walk over there?
Sure.
Okay. It's changing it from a non-qualified high deductible health plan to a qualified high deductible health plan. So basically, right now, you have a twenty-five hundred dollars deductible for singles, and then forty-five hundred dollars for family. So by changing it to a qualified plan, it doesn't change the deductible for the five hundred, but the family has to meet the forty-five hundred dollar deductible before the plan begins to pay a hundred percent. Right now, it's per individual up to that family limit.
Oh, okay.
So that's where it gets a little bit different, but it's still the same forty-five hundred dollars. The other piece that it adds to it is by going to a qualified high deductible health plan, it does allow the city to have preventive drugs covered prior to the deductible, so things aren't, now that you're paying a hundred, that they're paying for until they meet the deductible, could be paid for at a hundred percent prior to deductible, like blood pressure, diabetes medication, there's a whole list of like, most of it's heart, some like mental health, like attention deficit medication, some of those things can all be covered at a hundred percent prior to deductible. So it gives you a little bit, there's a give and take with it, but that's the give. The big thing about it is that with the HSA compared to a flexible spending account is what he was alluding to, or even with the VIVA, so let's just talk about the flexible spending account. If you, the employees can put money into that account, I mean, the city could for all practical purposes, but you know, you don't do that right now, but if at the end of the year, you put in the twenty-seven hundred dollars that's allowed, and you don't use it, you lose it, and it goes back to the city for administrative expenses. With the health savings account, if you put that money in, so you put that same twenty-seven hundred dollars, and let's just say you put twenty-five hundred... let's just say you put $2,500, and at the end of the year, you still have $2,500 left, it rolls over into the next year. And you can start over with that same $2,700, and it just keeps rolling and building value throughout the year.
Is that also portable?
It's portable.
So if someone leaves the employment of the city, they take that with them?
Yes, they do. Yeah, they never lose it, it's always your account. The other thing that the HSA allows, so with the Viva, someone's gonna switch to the Viva, so the other piece that you have right now where you're doing the $100 into that or, not the $100, $500, the $1,000 for family, 500 per single annually, the employee can't put any other money. The only time that money can be put into that, we have the employees, if they could put their, at time of termination, they could put their severance, or they could put their unpaid vacation, you could put that into the account to be saved, but it's all, it's all really city money, okay? So the employee can't add anything extra to that account. So even in the situation, so, but with the Health Savings Account, the city can put that same $1,000 into the family, but the family can now contribute up to $7,100, so they can put in another $6,100 in, to plan for future expenses. So if I know that I have a $4,500 deductible, the city's putting in a thousand, that means that I still have to come up with the other $3,500, and that could be through the HSA or through the spec plan or through my own savings. But with the HSA, you could plan, you could put in, in addition, you could put in excess of what your deductible is and start saving for the next year if that works for you and your buddy.
You know, to get taken out equally for every pay period?
Right, it's per pay period. And the other thing that's really great about an HSA is that it's flexible, so let's say, for example, I'm gonna, I want to put in $5,000 a year, that's kind of my budget in my head right now. So I start taking, I start doing that, and all of a sudden I realize, I can't afford that, I need to, I need to back off. You can back off in the middle of the year and make a change to that, or vice versa. I never put anything in, now I have a bill. I can put that money into my, I can start contributing that to that account mid-year, you know, as long as I put the money in, and I can use it to pay that bill going forward.
So can you place something with money, even though you don't have that much set aside?
Yes, yes. So what, so what you can do is with a, with the Health Savings Account, because the city, they're proposing that they can, instead of contributing that to the Viva, they're gonna contribute that $1,000 and the $500 to the HSA. So each employee who's on the plan will have an account open for that. And then that allows the employee the flexibility to say, do I want to contribute now, or do I want to contribute later? Do I want to contribute a lump sum? Because if you're the kind of person that's a planner, and maybe you have savings, you can put that money in as a lump sum, and write it off as a, sort of above the line tax deduction at that point. So there's a lot of things that you can do with the Health Savings Account that you can't do with FSA, because once you commit to an FSA, you're committed to that for the entire year, whether you use it or not, and it comes out of your check for the whole year. The difference is that the money has to be in the account to use it with an HSA, and an FSA, it's available right away, because you've got that commitment that you're gonna pay that throughout the rest of the year. So it could be a little bit, you know, an additional, if you think about it with the, with the city, if you contribute, if I say I'm gonna do $2,500, I spend all that money upfront, and I leave mid-year, now my check isn't there anymore, the city's unhooked for the full 2,500 if I spent it. With an HSA, the money has to be in there for them to spend it, it's not your money other than what you've already put in, so it can be a little bit more of a positive on that, on that side for you too.
And payroll deduction is pre-tax, which is nice.
It's pre-tax payroll deduction, right, right.
If we adopt this, we would still be offering a limited FSA, wouldn't we?
Uh, dependent care.
We'll still have the FSA, it's just not.
It won't be, right.
Is it, the way it's worded, it seems like we're going.
Yeah, not completely getting rid of it.
We're not getting rid of it, but just limiting it.
Right, right.
So if we already had a non-qualifying, why wasn't this considered earlier, like when this was, if, the only difference was the preventative types of things we're talking about, I'm not sure what the, why it's.
I think that it's, it's just the times are getting different, everybody is getting more used to having an HSA, it's more of a popular plan to have. You know, with, you know, they want to let, you know, not letting go of the Viva, everybody was very comfortable with an HSA.
Yeah, and you can't answer the question, because I'm really rhetorically asking, why the city look at this, since you already had a non-qualifying.
I don't know, I mean, it's.
You already had a high deductible plan to start with.
Right, right. Because, because you didn't have to go to that whole family, you know, the family deductible does change to 4,500. You know, they have to satisfy that entire amount, where before, it was only one person that was, they only had to satisfy $2,500 going forward, because it's going to be a non-embedded deductible, they have to satisfy the entire 4,500 before the plan will pay 100%.
I thought, well, and this is where I get confused, high deductible and health plan, I thought you only had to meet the high deductible for each person, the 2,500 or the 1350 or something.
Well, it's 1350, but the minimum is 2,800 for family. So if you wanted to have it.
To be the qualified.
To be a qualified plan, right, to be a qualified plan, and you wanted to have the way that it works right now, single deductible with so many to be, for family, the minimum deductible that you can have right now is $2,800. So we would have to change it from 2,500 for the individuals to 2,800. When we were talking about it, you know, the, so now the employees aren't, you know, those that have single coverage aren't gonna pay more, and the families really aren't gonna pay more, other than the fact they have to meet the entire deductible.
No greater exposure is one of the things we talked about, and honestly, tell us here, we did not know that we could have, we had ultimately a qualified plan with that one change in whether it was embedded or not, not getting the weeds too much, but.
Right, right.
And what's the difference between the HSA and HRA?
An HRA is a Health Reimbursement Account, which is totally, it's kind of a, a Viva is an HRA, if you will, so it's all employer money.
Okay.
Does that start at the beginning of the year then? So any, any bills that, yeah, if this is adopted, would that start at the end of the year or at the beginning of the year?
Right.
Money would start going in at the beginning of the year, if the employee's putting more in.
Right, so for all, for all things occurred as a 1-1, 2020, I mean.
Has everybody got it straight up as of then? I mean, any bills that are old?
No, that would be paid under the previous plan, so.
So the previous plan is gonna go on everybody, and then restart over, okay?
Right, so anything prior 1-1 will go to the old plan, and anything after 1-1 will go into the new plan.
This chart that, here, is this the total cost or the city's cost?
You're referring to the one on the back of.
That's total cost.
And the city pays 80%, the employee pays 1%.
Right, right.
Is that ratio something that you see pretty typical, or?
Yes, 80/20 is very typical, although it's, for 80/20, for family is a little bit higher than what we see, but for, for a single, that's pretty close, for 75/25, it's right in there.
Well, we've had discussions, we need to look at that, since premiums are going up so much, and we need to.
Right, most family premiums, non-cities, non, if you take on cities and counties, most families are at 50/50 for the private sector. Most, I, you know, most cities and counties are at the 75/25 or 80/20, and we visit right in there. You're not, not overly more or, or under.
Okay. Any other questions? So do we just have to make a motion to convert the plan to an HSA, and then is that automatically?
Yeah, it would be to move from the current FSA, Viva plan to the HSA plan, noting Bruce's point that the limited FSA still would apply to dependent care.
And then do we need to make a resolution about the Health Insurance Premium, or is that just?
That's a motion as well, separate item.
Okay, okay.
Also move on the first one, that would be through the city council, approve the move from FSA to Viva plan to an HSA, effective 1-1, 20.
Okay, got a motion by Rick Seiler?
Oh, second.
And a second by Maggie Bass. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, second one is, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the.
So be 9.3%, so you'd be looking at.
Option two health partners, is that what we're asking?
I'll make that motion. I got a second by Bruce Wolf. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, I guess I'm gonna take this, since President Mark is coaching hockey tonight, that's his excuse. At our last golf course meeting, golf management wanted to be able to publish the rates which need to be approved by the city council, and the reason they do that is because they have a lot of snowbirds that start thinking while taking off, and a lot of times they'd like to pay their, their fees before they had, had sold. Just a little information is, during our golf budget meeting, we didn't finish that yet, we have another reading November 5th, hopefully to finalize that, so we can present that to the council on November 13th. Is that, you know, we were looking at other areas of revenue, we thought, well, can we change our golf course to just a daily fee golf course versus memberships and things like that, and, and it was kind of the board's consensus that, that would kind of put us in more in a competitive, really competitive mode with Creek Spend and Montgomery National, who do have some memberships, but are very aggressive in their daily fees. So the, I think golf board's consensus was to continue with the memberships. I think last year we had 230 members, we are trying to shoot for 250 members, so we've added a couple things new this year. A special new first time rate, which is $800 plus tax, and a special new foursome rate, which is if four people sign up together, they will get it, or $600 for tax. And we used both of those programs in the past with some success, so we're gonna try to use it again. The only other change on the membership rates is young adults. We had a very successful program a couple years ago, when we had it around $450, and that included tax, so last year was at 495, so we decided to move it down to get that group of, tap that group of young golfers, and those are people aged 23. So that's really the only changes we decided to make on the memberships. The last couple years, we have made some increases to our membership fees, and it did, did affect a little of our membership numbers. But it's like anything else, a lot of our memberships, the sooner you open the course, it just seems your memberships go up, and the later you open the course, they go down, because people calculate that if I am a member and I pay X dollars and this, well, that's a $35 an hour, or I could just pay green fees and be the same thing. So we're kind of contingent on that. We're also thinking about doing a promotional thing in January, where if you pay in January, and we haven't finalized this, but maybe have an option that one person may pull it to be paid, and by a certain date in January, you pull it out, someone might get $500 cash, so they almost get most of their membership paid, to try to get more members paying early in the season, but. So I guess I'm just looking for approval of these rates. On the green fee side, the only difference is, we added a dollar per round on the daily green fees, not on the card fees, just the yearly card fees, 25, 37, 24, and 41.
I think you said this check, but what, how do these compare with our local competitors?
Well, depends, they're probably lower than Creek Spend published rates. Now, you gotta remember, published rates are different than what the people actually pay. They're similar to Montgomery National, they're lower than Ridge's St. Creek. So we feel that the dollar amount is, is fair, but obviously, you know, Creek Spend has a lot of Groupon, other things that, I don't know too many people who pay the published rate of $50 down at Creek Spend, but our published rates are actually going in the middle, they're actually lower than Ridge's and Creek Spend in similar to.
And then do you remember the definition, the page that says never been a member, and the other page that says not a member in 2019?
Yeah, the sheet here is the correct one. Yes, we feel that if they weren't a member in 2019, if we can recapture them and get them back, you know, we're willing to do that. Yes.
I know you haven't finished your budget talks, but by not increasing the membership rates, do you think that that will align?
Well, if you look at the memberships, really don't, I mean, you can increase your membership to a 3%, that's only $4,000 or $5,000. That's not our issue, the issue is we get increased rounds. Last year, I think we get about 47% of the rounds were member rounds, and about 49% were green fee rounds. So it, the nice thing about having, getting a nice good membership base, is in like a year like last year, when there's a lot of rain, you know, you still have revenue coming in. If you're strictly a daily fee course, you're gonna lose that revenue. But we still have to work out some kind of a marketing plan. We've already talked, I think we might be able to add another tournament that's interested in playing new prey, you know, tournaments, you know, usually make $10,000, $12,000 on. You know, so we have to look at trying to increase our rounds. Weather is one thing, we've talked about some other ideas, but we're not only looking at, from the budget side, of trying to just increase revenues, we're also looking at how we can cut costs. I think you're all aware that GME is no longer gonna be managing the course, Mike is putting a job description together, and we gotta get that published, and hopefully we can get that out, that's gonna still take four, five weeks, or six weeks, in my thought. GME also did say that they're not gonna leave us high and dry. If we can't get this closed out and end of the year at the end of their contract, they would help support us going forward. So they're not just gonna, you know, here's the keys, at 12:31, walk away, they'll, they'll make sure that we're still running. The other thing, and I emailed Brooke, and I did not hear back from her today about Chamber Bingo, if they're gonna use the golf course. Last year, we had the issue with the water pipe burst, and we lost, you know, pretty much three quarters of the bingo season, so I don't know, you know, she didn't respond back, so that's another issue that we have to address too. If we don't get that, then that's fine, then we just have to, in our budget, obviously, there are costs associated with doing that too, so. So I've been trying today, just looking for the council's approval of the 2020 golf membership and green fees.
I think the motion should approve.
Okay, I got a motion by Bruce Wolf, stuck by Sean Ryan, there's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Ken, rental, rental license ordinance.
All right.
Fast finding.
Yep, so as a council, we recall, on March 11th, 2019, we had a workshop with the council about possible rental dwelling license ordinance. We followed that up on April 1st with a council fall discussion, which ultimately led to the council looking for staff to collect data, a number of calls received regarding rental properties, both were nuisance code issues, life safety issues, from planning and building department standpoint, as well as calls for service from the police department. The planning and building department kept track of the calls for these past six months. Police department used any property we had on our current rental registration listing, and basically tracked that for their calls for service, and that's how we were able to make note of what we had on, on file for these past six months, so. In regard to the planning and billing department calls that we received, we did have 15 calls. 11 of those 15 calls were on unique addresses, meaning there was three of them that actually had multiple calls at them. Most were for nuisance and refuse matters that were obviously already addressed by our nuisance code for longer ass. our nuisance code for longer hours, refuse, those types of things. We had two issues, or I should say, three of the issues were for life safety, two are ongoing issues still that we're working with tenants and/or landlord on. And one of those came in front of the council, if you recall, back on August 5th, and I believe she has since moved out and so she no longer actually resides in that unit, but that's one of the ones that ended up on spreadsheet. I can note that because she had made herself public for that. Regarding police calls, we did have 370 calls for service that related to rental units. That's about 22.7% of our calls for service for rental properties, only a slightly higher percentage than non-rental properties. About 21% of our properties in town are rental, if you look at our total makeup. We do believe that that number could be a little higher. We believe there's a number of rental properties that actually are not on our spreadsheet that are rentals, and that's one of our issues we have right now is there's not a lot of teeth on our rental registration ordinance to actually compel all the rental units to actually fill out their paperwork for the two-year cycle and get those in. And we run across rental units every so often through utility billing records or looking at what's homestead, not homestead within each county, and we follow up with them, but just not a whole lot of teeth on our rental registration ordinance to get them to do that. In the end, six months of data collection, I don't believe anything that we collected for data was some, you know, smoking gun type information on, you know, because of this information, we should go forward with the rental registration or rental inspection program. I also noted the same thing on March 11th, and I think if we collected data, that would really add much to the discussion. Really, I think it comes back to, and I had said this before at our workshop and then again at the meeting on April 1st, is why cities do rental inspection programs really to take the onus off rental tenants, to be proactive from the city's perspective, to ensure that they have a safe place to live and that our quality of rental units are maintained. We do have a big demand for rental units in New Prague. Can I say exactly how many would be in great shape and have no issues, no, we don't know that because we haven't been in them. We've been in a handful that we've seen issues in, but I can't quantify that at all at this point. We obviously, again, to address the one tenant that was in front of the council back on August 5th. We have had a couple of phone calls from tenants that, once they realized we did not have an inspection program, didn't want to leave their name, didn't want to leave their address because they knew we didn't have a program. So take that for what it's worth. We obviously received a number of calls, emails. Most recent email I've had the council receive was from Kit Chenbaugh, a property owner, rental property owner in New Prague, who suggested that we should look at other avenues for advocating for rental tenant rights, then they have a rental ordinance in place. That said, I'll just kind of leave it at this from staff's perspective. You know, we still believe there should be a minimal standard for the rental units. I did put a checklist in that actually mirrors what they do in City of California, which are very minimal things. I know there's been a lot of discussion, and I'm sure the council's heard about this, that we had talked about a crime-free housing provision in the draft ordinance that we had. We actually never got into the details on how that could or couldn't work. And really, we just never got into details of anything, I guess, with the council at this point, so. Staff would like to at least see additional meetings held with landlords, but really would like your direction on whether we just put our ass to the issue and go on to other avenues or how you would see. We did notify a number of landlords, albeit it happened today, so I'm sure some weren't able to make it tonight, that we were presenting this information to the council, but the intent was always to have further discussions with landlords and tenants. This wasn't meant to get any action specifically taken, any ordinance or anything here tonight. I know Joe and Craig are here tonight as well and had been at previous meetings we've had as well, so. I don't wanna put yours in their mouth, I'm sure they might have something you'd say if you'd like them to talk as well.
Scott, you know, I think from my perspective, you know, and I don't know which is the right way to go, but you know, you see a lot of things happen in other cities, and I just think that there should be some kind of vehicle at the city level that a tenant can come to the city, because a lot of times they're not gonna go to the county, they're not gonna go to the state. You know, it doesn't, you know, I'm not saying reinvent the wheel, but is there some, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Well, and there are a number of cities that have that for that very reason. I have a few cities that do not have anything, but they still get the calls anyways and they're still pointing out what you can and can't do. It's just another tool, and it's another option, and it gives staff the ability to do something. You know, on the same side, you don't want to do something that's extremely redundant and overburdenous. Either, you hear that from landlords all the time, that makes some sense. I do have a couple of communities that do all the way through the crime free and that type of situation, which requires a lot of staff time and a lot of effort, and then a lot of effort by landlords as well, but there are a number of folks that advocate for that too. So it runs a whole gamut with something.
Okay.
If you're looking at something like this inspection sheet you got, what are you looking at for cost? I mean, is that, you know, you gotta have half-hour inspections, so what are you gonna charge? $60 for like a half-hour inspection and then take and do that for like a year?
Yeah, so to answer your question, I think some landlords I had calls from today believe that it would be a four-hour inspection. You know, we have even talked to the council on how in-depth we would go with any of this. Yeah, we'd have to be, obviously, we would wanna cover the time for staff to do it. Again, like with our building inspections, renting to profit, opposite in any sense, we just wanna make sure we cover the time and cover the expense of the program. Actually, never develop the fees for you, other than we estimate, I think, about $50 per unit, I think, is kind of the ballpark we looked at for a two-year cycle on a unit.
Two years?
And then some kind of a discount for multiple units, that type of thing. And I think the overall revenue per year was about $12,000. So we figured we could do about 100 units, or 100 buildings a year for inspections. So we have about 190 buildings in town that contain a total of 628 minutes that are registered at this point. I think there might be actually a few more than that.
So you're not talking a major expense though? I mean, if you're taking $50 for every two, every two years for each unit.
And so right now, just to back up a little bit, our rental registration program, we have a two-year cycle on that, and that's just $25 per building, not per unit. So there's already costs that they have for that, although this obviously is a per-unit thing we'd look at because you're actually going to a new one. So there is an increase in cost to that. Again, we haven't talked about the specifics, but we're really not looking to get into nitty gritty details or big property maintenance things, it's really the life safety is where we would like to go if the council is interested in doing that.
Yeah, you know, I, with that lady that testified and stuff, you know, there's nothing we can change about state law, and you wanna have it on a month-to-month because that way you can give rid of the nuisance tenants. But I'm just wondering on, you know, like you had a one-year lease, and then every, every month after that, it's month-to-month. And, you know, I'm well aware of, you know, you get, you get tenants that are troublesome, and the only way to get rid of them would be to move it up into a month-to-month leasing. But they use that as a retaliatory act that that one homeowner, that one landlord to that girl that was here. Is there anything that we could add in there for a...
Can we dictate?
Yeah.
The term of a lease as a city? Scott, really?
No.
No, that's what I was wondering. I mean, you can't tell a landlord that they can lease it for a year or two years or a month-to-month.
And I think so the month-to-month, she still had rights as a tenant, obviously, and some of the rights she chose not to go through the process under the tenant remedy.
It's so cumbersome that I wouldn't have done it either, so.
There is that, and I think it can be daunting for some people. There certainly are rights that they have. I think, Scott, you alluded to that. When Ms. Maniac was here, we actually had an email from Scott or Dave, I forget who wrote that, that she had rights and there's a process to go through. You know, whether they have the time or the interest or the ability to do that, you know, that's kind of another thing. They have to determine if they wanna do that.
And I don't wanna take all the rights away from the homeowner or the landlord, you know, I'm certified in real estate too, and I've dealt with all that stuff for a long time, so I don't wanna impede too much onto the property owner. However, that was just so disappointing to see that, you know, like that girl. And this thing here, this would actually, you know, this would actually do it, I mean, it's so vague that it would just give the city the opportunity to go in and make sure the property is livable and safe. And then they could rent it out, they got the one-year lease, if the tenants start working out, they've got their month-to-month after that. So I don't, I don't know. It's very vague though, it's a very easy inspection that you're suggesting.
And this is what they use about playing currently, and Chad Lunder actually is at a conference this week, I was planning to have him here, had he not been at that, to give a little more detail if you wanted to get into that, and who can do that in the future with landlords, tenants, whoever, should you wanna go there or not, but yeah, there's pretty basic things. Notes even on here, you know, weeds and vehicles, these are the things that are already in nuisance ordinance. It just covers them additionally through that step as well.
There's some landlords here, I mean, do you guys see how this inspection sheet is? I mean, it's, and it's $50 every two years, I mean, it's not that...
They're not proposing that as a fee, Rick, I just wanna note that. We haven't talked about that at all.
You know what I mean? So I don't know.
Well, I think what Ken's looking for is direction to go to the next step. Obviously, we're not making any action right now, but do we feel it would be a little wise for the city to go in a direction where maybe some city staff sits down with some landlords, agree upon and say, how can we find a vehicle that works for New Prague so that people who live in the city, the way I think, again, I'm imagining is that we live in the city, have a vehicle to go and file a complaint rather than have to go to the county or have to go to the state, and, you know, then they don't feel like they're getting just answers. And I guess that's all I'm wondering, if that's the way the council wants to move forward. And I think that's all Ken's looking for. The statistics hasn't changed.
Should any more effort be put in in other areas?
Right. You know, so, go ahead.
Well, there's a few things I just wanna add, and I guess I wanna start with the, I just wrote some notes here. You know, Minneapolis just passed an ordinance, and one thing, if you don't stand up for your rights, eventually more and more are taken away. And they just passed an ordinance in Minneapolis that you can't even vet your tenants anymore. So if somebody, somebody has a felony, or they just broke out of prison, or they were just evicted, you can't even do a background check. Now, they did look at the small landlords, which myself, Craig, would be one, and they exempted, you know, if you had like, I think, 12 or less units, you could still vet, but your big apartment complexes, you can't even vet. So eventually, you know, what you decide today grows into something else, and that gets bigger and bigger, as it always does with government. And Faribault just retracted some of theirs because of their lawsuit, pending lawsuit, which it sounds like they're suddenly not at court, I don't know if anybody's heard it, but I know they've retracted on the crime-free issue. And any fees I...
What's it using?
Faribault. If you Google it, you'll see that they...
They didn't retract anything. There were a couple of minor provisions made in the ordinance that staff and the police chief wanted made, so no, they haven't.
They relaxed it though, if you...
No, I'm the city attorney. They didn't retract, they didn't step back.
They didn't step back on anything, okay. That's not what I read in the paper, but anyways, any rent, any fees that come about that, no matter what, that still gets passed down to the renter. And I've talked to a number of my renters, and they're willing to come to the meeting, just as you had somebody that was not happy, they're willing to come to the council and tell them that they don't want somebody coming to their house and inspecting it and talent, you know, they feel in a way that it's discriminatory towards them as well. Also, they, any fees are gonna be passed on to the tenant. The landlord might pay that bill eventually, but it's gonna get passed down to the tenant. So you're gonna start adding costs to the tenant as well. I personally have a property that I've already talked to the tenant and said if something goes through like this because of the age of the house, I don't even wanna deal with it, I'm gonna sell it. He was very disappointed because he's been living there for a few, about five years, and he says, I don't know where to go, but, you know, I understand. He says, you gotta do what you gotta do. But you're, it's just that, it's, it gets more and more cumbersome when you have the city telling you what you have to do and how to do your business, and you don't do that with other businesses, but you do it with rental properties, so.
Greg, you wanna add anything?
Great, Senator, thank you for listening. I would just wanna start out by saying, don't judge just Joe in my presence as an indicator of how much interest there is in this. I found out about this meeting, this was gonna be on the agenda at 11:59 from an email from Ken, so.
And Craig, let me make the point here, this is not a hearing, and we're not...
I understand.
...presenting information. This was only to present information to us, it was not for discussion.
I understand.
So don't be offended because it was not normal.
Please let me finish. I'm not doing that. But again, just please don't judge just because Joe and I are here, we're the only ones that have an interest in it. I just wanna read to you, in exchange, when I got this email from Ken, he also had an attachment with the rental dwelling license ordinance data collection summary, which we all have in front of you. And at that point, I asked him, sent him an email, and just please bear with me, Bruce, I'm gonna read to you just our exchange of emails this morning. Ken was also pretty appreciative of our time, he said we have a heavy, heavy agenda this evening, and if we didn't want to attend, send our email comments. Well, I think we're a little bit more interested than just sending you an email. But I sent Ken an email, I said, Ken, I will be asking to see a log entry on each call as to what was the address, what specifically was the issue on each call, was the landlord, if known, advised, what was done to resolve the call? Was the tenant given a tenant's rights handbook, and was there follow-up by the city or did the tenant call again? Of these 15 calls you cited, we really don't know, again, if they were duplicate calls, nor do we know how many related to a safe tenant environment. Unmowed grass is already an ordinance issue and not a safety issue. That was the first email that I wrote to Ken. And being in an agitated state like I was, I wrote him another email before he answered back, and I said, on reading your data collection summary of the 15 calls, what was the specific nature of each call? As you only mentioned rental conditions, long grass and refuse on the property and miscellaneous matters, what were those conditions and other matters? Did the tenants call about the grass or trash issues on the property they live in? Were the city ordinances already in existence enforced by sending out letters to the owners' landlords for the grass and trash complaints? Any of the issues cited need to be handled, how many of the issues cited need to be handled by a new city ordinance, or were ordinances already in position to handle the calls like grass and trash? Based on the vague information provided on the nature of each call and how it relates to the tenant's safety, I find your summary on the staff position to support a new ordinance to be very weak. Ken replied back, and I appreciate him replying with the back and forth. He replied back to me within 15 or so minutes, he says, Craig, I do not have the data cleaned up in order to give you the spreadsheet itself tonight, as there is a private data on the spreadsheet. I do want to note that the data collected does not, in my opinion, make a case for adopting the rental inspection ordinance, and I'd also note that in the memo. Same as with the police data collected, it really doesn't make a case for an ordinance beyond what we've already provided as background to the council. That's pretty significant because I'm hearing him kinda driving the bus on other things. I can also tell you that, this is Ken speaking in, I can also tell you there were 11 unique addresses... unique addresses, meaning three were multiple logs on the spreadsheet, and as noted in the memo, most were for nuisance violation-type issues, and in those cases, the landlord and tenant were both notified. I do agree those issues are not safety issues and are already addressed by the ordinance under new, other, under nuisances. A couple of cases are still ongoing and I cannot provide further details at this time. And he basically went on to say that the information is just being presented. I'm just saying, and I think Chuck, you touched on it, you didn't want to, you don't want to reinvent the wheel, but the county has provisions for handling this, the state has the ordinance landlord's book that one of the landlords gave to Ken earlier before the meeting. State's got it covered, it's all laid out for them. Just the fact that they don't want to go to the state and to the county for their remedy, I think is a poor excuse that we have to set up ordinances in the city. Already, you are reinventing the wheel if you do something of this nature. They have remedies in place, and they're very well spilt out, and believe me, when a landlord goes to court, it's taken into account, and I think the hand is stacked in favor of the tenants. Believe me, I've been to court, and that is the way it happens. So, thank you for listening.
Craig, I have a question for you.
Sure.
And don't, I haven't made up my mind either way on anything, and this was just the first step, but if those remedies are already there at the county level or the state, why does it bother you that the city would do the same thing, other than that it's just redundant?
I think, I think, I think to answer your question, I think you, Joe hit on it, it's like, you don't tell other businesses in town how to run their business, why would you do that to us? And you know what, you have the potential, Rick, you said something, it's a very short and minor list. What if the inspector came to Joe, Joe's two houses in one day, and red-tagged both furnaces in one place, or cited that the windows don't work? He'd be out of business in two houses immediately. You know, I don't know about Joe, but I take care of my properties and I provide and buy a lot of umbrella-type insurance. I do, I'm not in the business of providing an unsafe environment. If I'm providing an unsafe environment, I risk the potential of getting sued and losing those homes, or banks' homes in my case. So, we're doing that already, just to, I guess Joe said it best, we don't want you overstepping your bounds, and we're taking care of our business the way we need to. Sean had answered your question.
You did, I just wanted to get to the point, is it something that, that you, and first of all, I'll go on record and just say, I think this was a good initial discussion, I'm hoping that we can still get the landlords and the city together and talk through some of these issues. Uh, I think that's always good, but, um, you know, just to cite your example, what would prevent Scott County or Zuer County coming in and red-tagging those two properties? I mean, it seems like you're making an argument on one side that the safety production, or those things could already happen to you, that you don't need the city to, but I'm just wondering, I'm looking for what the deeper meaning is, is it because the landlords here in Craig are worried that they'll be inspected every two years, and where Scott County, you might not ever see somebody from Scott County?
I'm just saying, and I think it's that you're picking on a certain form of business people, and we are, you go up and down the street telling those business owners how they should maintain their property?
I agree with that. And then the ordinances-
Well, we kind of do, I mean, there are ordinances-
There are ordinances in effect, yes.
For safety reasons, and I think that's what-
Just that there are ordinances in effect for rental properties right now.
Right. Well, we do have ordinances, you know, on the city-
Nuisances, unmowed grass, trash in the yard.
But Craig, we do have ordinances for businesses, how they have to have their business up-
And you have ordinances already for rental properties.
Like what?
Nuisances.
No, not the nuisance, but safety.
What do you have for, what do you have for the businesses on safety issues?
Well, obviously, if they have an unsafe deal, the city can discuss, he's not in his head.
It's like, Craig, it's like any other code violation, and it applies to rental as well. I mean, if there's a code violation that's well-known, the city has the ability to go in and deal with that. I mean, that exists, they are-
Do you do inspections on businesses for code violations?
I don't here. In our number cities, they do, yeah.
Do they do it here? They don't do it here?
I'm sorry, no, no. But if it's a known violation, if there's a code that's out there, yes, they will.
I would agree totally, if it's a known violation, but right now, you're saying you want to go into rental houses, as opposed to, do you want to, why don't you inspect every business up and down Dupre for code violations, if that's what you're worried about?
Can we tell them you said this?
Or I want every resident in Dupre, you know, check, check their houses for fire extinguishers and smoke detectors.
You're talking owner-occupied? You can control your own destiny if you own that home. You can do those repairs.
It's, I think with, what the protection here is, is the renter, that if they feel that something is not being addressed, that they have another avenue to go. If this is a private residence, my home, and I have a water heater that doesn't work and I don't care, well, you know, that's, it only affects me, so.
Judging on what you were talking about, the woman that came in in August, had she exhausted her remedies that exist through the state? Had she done her rent ask-go action?
No, she got stuck at the cumbersome park where you, you got to go in there and you got to file all that paperwork, and that was something that she wasn't willing to do. I think she even did do that.
She started down that path and, um, got the eviction notice, or not renewal of her month-to-month, and then just kind of-
You guys got that ammunition, that month-to-month rental, I mean, you got that. And I understand your point of view on the, if you start a snowball and throw it downhill, it's just going to grow, grow, grow. I understand that part of it too, because I'm not a big government person. However, when we've got renters in this neighborhood, look, you guys are just two of the owners, and you, and I know you're speaking for the other owners, but there's problems in some of them houses. And, you know, it's an investment, and it's your investment, not ours, you know? And when you've got plumbing on the outside of the wall, and you've got gas lines outside of the wall, you already, you guys know that. And it's hazardous, and you're not the only homeowners. I'm not saying that your properties are bad, I'm not saying your properties are bad. I'm saying in general, we should be able to go in and take a look. And this is such a basic inspection, I mean, anybody can pass it, but yeah, if you got, if you got a dangerous situation and you get a red tag, and it would take quite a bit to get a red tag, that's your deal, that's your investment, not mine. See what I'm saying? That's all, that's all I'm trying to say, is that the city should have the right to go in and look at your property. It's a business. We can go into any one of these businesses and take a look around. And yes, we do, we regulate bars extremely, liquor stores, they've got to be in a certain condition, so to say that we don't check out the rest of the properties, I think is just misleading, because we do, and you used to be mayor here, so you know. I mean, there's a certain amount, we can't just tell everybody, all right, live however you want, because we're not a civilized society here in Dupre. Well, we are, and some of them properties are just downright horrible, and we need some, a little leverage to work with them owners to get them properties updated so that everybody stays safe.
Then why don't you just make an easy provision if you've got a record of that calls and says, hey, I got, you know, I want somebody to come and look at something, go and look at it. Well, it's that simple. You don't need to go through an whole inspection list, just make a revision, let somebody go and look at it.
And then what do you do? You know, just say, the owner, okay, yeah, you've got a violation.
Then, then the owner should take care of it, if there's, it's a major problem. And I think most owners will take care of it. And I don't understand your comment about month-to-month, what do you mean by that?
Once your lease is up, if you sign a one-year lease, after that lease, you are renting on a month-to-month basis.
Yes, what's your point?
My point is, is that you just tell them that you don't have to rent them next month, so your lease is terminated, so you have to move. I mean, that's your, that's your power, that's what you've got.
And why do you want to, I don't even understand that, because most of the time, renter, it's very difficult when you're running a rental business to find good tenants, and then why, what would make you go through the effort of wanting to get rid of that tenant, even when it's-
If the tenant is cumbersome and, you know, there's all sorts of reasons, I mean, I'm not going to argue that one point.
It's very costly to change a tenant, so you don't want to go through that process to do that.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Craig, I want to apologize for interrupting you, I respect you, I respect your opinion, so, um, your opinions are important for all landlords. Where I was trying to say is that when this was brought up last city council meeting, it was only to present the information, and I didn't realize we're having any discussion or inviting anyone else to specifically come, and I think if we do something further, we would open up to everybody, certainly allow more time for someone to have, and certainly it would have to be a hearing and a little process.
I wanted to know that.
I apologize, so I don't, I didn't mean to-
Joe and Craig and a few other landlords had asked for the information if it was ever brought up again, which is why I provided that to them.
But where do we want to go as a council?
I would like to instruct the staff to continue on with, and that's what you're looking for as far as an action, right? You just want us to, whether we want you to keep looking into this, or what is your-
Do you want us to just drop the issue altogether, or should we, like, I think the next logical step would be to meet with landlords, you know, call a meeting, I don't know if we want it to be in a workshop setting again with the council, or how we want to do that, but-
I think I agree with the mayor that it should stay on the table for now, but it needs to be a broader group of people, not city and landlord. It needs to be a task force that's comprised, I think you had it in your memo, of landlords and tenants and maybe some city staff, and just have further discussion, because what we're not seeing here is any tenant being, what's the word I'm looking for? We don't have any tenant represented, did he represent it? Represented, thank you. And I think that's important, is to have, just have a dialogue, and I don't think that dialogue hurts, it doesn't mean it's going necessarily end in an ordinance or end in, you know, the city taking action or the city council taking action, but it doesn't hurt to just have further discussion and have all parties represented.
Maybe solicit names from landlord community, tenant community, I don't know.
Yeah.
And just within that discussion, tighten up the scope of this, I mean, this not, this was very broad, and Craig made some great points, I mean, for these multiple people that were following, the ones that, you know, do we exclude the ones that don't give their name and address or who their landlord is, and, you know, who've been anything, maybe just-
Right, and I think, as far as collecting more data, I don't think we're at that point. I think, right, like, just to have the dialogue, and maybe it doesn't lead anywhere ultimately, but have the task forces an independent body bring more information to the council might be the way to go.
That's, that's what I would suggest, I don't know if everyone's-
What would you want the task force to bring, or what is, what do you mean? I don't understand what information we're expecting.
So, I think how that had gone before, when we had brought the city council all through, and ended up with the data collection, I don't have the memo in front of me, was still looking for soliciting tenants, landlords, and-
I wonder if that isn't that first step, I mean, you can't even admit it, there's not a lot of teeth in, we don't even-
In the rental registration, there's not-
I know these guys with their rental properties pay the fee, you know, every two years, whatever, but there are people out there that are renting their homes that either don't know or don't care, or, and without even getting that, the teeth involved in that, that might be the first step to find out how many we are and who are the problem landlords that are getting the majority of the complaints from. You know, I mean, if it's gas lines that are outside of walls, a black mold going up, a dripping tub with, you know, tiles falling out or something, I guess that's-
Hard to even say without-
Find out who those landlords are. I mean, these guys, they would get that fixed. Well, that would be, that would be putting the teeth into the first, you know, the actual registration of the rental property.
Right, but even on the ones we have registered, we have no idea what condition any of them are in. So even getting them registered doesn't add to the condition question, in my opinion.
No, but what I'm saying though is that if we know who those landlords are, and then we get the complaint, it might just be one landlord that has seven houses out there that the majority of these complaints are coming from, because they're not putting one thing into it, where Craig and Joe go out, meet with the customer, say, okay, you need new windows or whatever, and try to alleviate the problem. I mean, it could just be one individual or two, just four or two renters, because we don't know who those renters are, or who those landlords are, excuse me.
I think we need to step back and take a look at how we got here tonight. Six months ago, it was, the staff was directed to collect information to determine if we even had a problem. Out of these eleven complaints, I don't see that staff has proved that we have an issue. Out of the eleven complaints-
I'm not saying there's not an issue at all, I'm saying that the data collected does not show any greater issue than-
Please, Ken, let me finish. I didn't interrupt you.
I see that if there's eleven, so that's twenty-two in a year.
Can I finish, please? Can I finish?
No, I'm running the meeting, Craig.
I was, I had the floor though, you-
No, yeah, but, okay, I'm just telling you, I think twenty-two on an annual basis is an issue, in my opinion. So, go ahead.
Thank you. Out of those eleven issues, Ken did not show on those logs what the issues were for each one. He mentioned grass, nuisances, and trash in the yard, neither of which, or neither of the three are an issue for, a safety issue for a landlord. And were they calling on their own place, it never mentioned what the specific issue was on each of those eleven. And again, six months ago, we were, we sat here wanting to determine, is there a problem?
As private data, Craig, we cannot give that information out.
What information? I don't want the names of the places, I don't want, don't need the names of the tenants. What was the issue at each place?
I don't know, where do we want to go as a council?
Well, once again, I mean, you're going to put a focus group together, they can, I can see where it's going to go, it's going to go nowhere, you know what I mean? And this is something that the staff needs to complete their, you know, they're asking us for a tool so that they can complete their job, and I don't see us keep delaying it and delaying it and delaying it. We've already got them to work it down to where it's just a simple deal, and I understand you don't want to start the snowball, but unfortunately, there is some people that, you know, we had a girl in here, I mean, she was almost crying, I mean, she lost her house, just because she complained about the mold on the walls, and we had zero power to go even go look at it, so.
Well, we would look at it, but-
What do you do? So, I don't know, there is obviously an issue because you have rental houses, I mean, and you get these guys that buy these things for dirt cheap, and they think they're going to be millionaires, they don't put any money into their investment, and everybody else has got to deal with it, you know, and I don't, I don't agree with that.
I don't know if that's the case in every rental.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying every rental, but there's that situation that's out there, and we can't do anything about it, and I just-
Right. If I could just make one, I think you should, you need to be cognizant of your renters in this town and giving them affordable housing, and if you start adding too much to the plate, it gets expensive and there's landlords that aren't going to want to deal with it.
Maybe two dollars a month for a second.
Well, you're still, you're still going to add to, I mean, their rent goes up regardless. I mean, they're going to have to pay it, and you got less affordable housing in town, you get less landlords that are going to be in the market, and you're going to run everybody into the big apartment complexes that are already regulated, basically, and you won't have affordable housing anymore in Dupre. It's going to come down to that at some point.
Well, what's consensus?
Well, if you're looking for direction. Yeah, and what is the staff recommending at this point, or are you just recommending to continue the-
I just want direction before we go in from here. Maggie suggested a task force, I think that's-
That was one suggestion, yes.
I'd like to continue the dialogue on board with Maggie, where we can get some landlords and listen to some tenants, and involves every staff.
Great.
I'll give you something, you know, I don't want to just sit on my hands and throw. You know, I don't want to just sit on my hands and throw. Something bad happened, you know, I just, you know, I lost a brother that was a fireman who went in to rescue some family, and the ceiling came down on him and crushed his lungs. He would've been all right, but it knocked his mask off. It was the couch that was there, so he got poisoned. So, that's just, you know, that's just something I'm looking at, and I, so I'm not good with having rental properties be owners. You know, there's some owners that are just bad owners.
Okay.
You know, all right? We got it.
Yep, we got it.
I'm certainly comfortable with pursuing the conversation and task force, or whatever my concerns are, health and safety-related, and understanding the crime-free, you know, I wasn't here when you raised this topic, Rosie, it started percolating last year, I guess, so I'm not really understanding the crime-free issue and how much, how important that is, or not important. We hear last meeting or so about some of the drug use and some of the properties that are in New Prague that have sightings for that. So, I'm not sure if there's a need for that in rental ordinance or not. I'm still trying to understand the rationale for the need, but health and safety, particularly when the use changes to rental, I think that's a trigger point where an inspection might be more warranted than not, because that's where health and safety as a residential to a rental is different. And ongoing, I think there has to be a balance of value of providing that versus the cost of it, but I'm certainly supportive of continuing it, but as I started out tonight, I didn't think we were gonna have this discussion tonight, so I'm unprepared to really pursue it. I thought we were going to have a further discussion later on, but if we want to pursue it, the task force, I'm comfortable with that. I'm not really expecting a lot out of that, but it certainly, if nothing else, present the issues in a formalized manner, so we can understand and look at them, and not have a continuous moving ball that are bouncing around here, back and forth. So, if there's a purpose and resolving a need, I think I'm supportive.
Okay. So, I guess we'd like to move forward and maybe get a group together.
Ballroom back, some thoughts on forming a task force for future meetings.
I'd like to throw my name in the hat to be on the task force.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, consent agenda.
Oh, could I ask a follow-up question? I don't know if Scott can answer this or not, but in this material, again, presented in this article, we refer to Minnesota law protects tenants, et cetera. And it says, "You must be able to provide your rate as a tenant by calling an inspector, comma, sending a letter, or other requests made to your landlord." Are you familiar with this part of the statute that talks about preserving your rates?
Yeah, I am generally. We have a couple of other folks that deal with this extensively, because they've got, there are cities that have and participate and have their own essentially tenant remedy court in the city, administrative law judges that deals with it there, rather than tenants having to go into the court system.
But the law, does Minnesota law require an inspection to maintain your rate?
To maintain what?
To maintain your rate to...
What part of the article are you referring to?
Second column, second paragraph, second sentence. Minnesota law protects tenants when the landlord is harassing the tenant because the tenant requests for appears to rental unit. You must be able to prove that you asserted your rate as a tenant by calling an inspector, comma, sending a letter to your landlord, or request.
Does state law provide any benefit by having an inspector...
Well, I mean, it gives a baseline to what the issue is, if you've called and asked for that. So, I understand what they're saying. Basically, they're saying you've got to have some, you have to show something tangible that you've done to show that you've attempted to make this remedy, requested this remedy...
So, a letter is just as valid than having an inspection?
Yes, but I would say an inspection is even better, but you're right, a letter is all you need to do to preserve, but you've taken that step from there forward then.
Well, this is, you know, as we talk about, there's so many different issues, it's not a big nut to crack.
Oh, yeah.
And just that alone is just a better understanding of some of these things, before we just get too far into depth. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Okay, consent agenda. Anyone have any questions, issues on anything on the consent agenda?
I'm going to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, I got a motion by Sean Ryan to pursue to approve the consent agenda.
Consent.
Yes, I... My Maggie Bass. If there's no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay. Miscellaneous. Mitch? Good? Patrick?
I'm good.
Good? James?
Nothing.
Bruce? Glenn?
Got nothing.
He's killing. Ken?
Nope.
Scott?
No.
Barb?
No.
Maggie?
Nope.
Rick?
Nope.
Bruce? Ha, I got some. No, I just, a couple of questions. In one of our objectives for the year was a facility survey. Ken, do you guys know where that's in?
You have to ask Mike about that one?
Okay.
Oh, that was smooth.
Ken, and in our last budget workshop, we talked about the problems of the bricks or whatever else?
Yeah, we're waiting for a...
Yeah, where does that one lead us?
A structural engineering report.
Facility survey.
Same place with the facility survey.
Okay. So, you're pushing it. Since Mike's not here to defend himself, we're gonna just drop him out here. Okay, that's all I have. Now, Mike, or Scott, we don't go in German, right?
Uh, yes, he actually notices stuff in German.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
I got a second by Sean Ryan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, we're in a German.